...word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead. But word bless this meeting and our town. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tammy Rolfe?
Here, Evan?
Excuse me, here.
Councilwoman Duff? Here. Councilman Renahan?
Councilman?
Sorry, Councilman Rourke?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Councilman Understate?
Here.
All present and accountable. Minute approvals from February 12th.
Second.
Any discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you. Alright, Tammy, when you're ready.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Town staff and Main Street revitalization update.
Town staff attended the 19th monthly partnering meeting on February 21st, 2019. In addition to our monthly meetings, as I've said before, the town staff meets with the state highways, project manager, and CJ Miller superintendent every Monday morning to discuss the Main Street project's schedule and updates. Bee Genie is scheduled to drop electric for the lamppost in the section from Northwoods Trail to Ralph Avenue on March 15th. Then the lamppost in this section can be lit on the northbound side. The remaining lampposts on the southbound lane will be installed when the sidewalks are completed. And we're hoping to get to the weather that that can occur soon. CJ Miller has staked out the sidewalks on both sides from the Huxville Road, Lower Beckleysville intersection to Shiloh Avenue. And he staked out the new retaining wall at 1100 Main Street. A crew will be working from Shiloh, southbound, to Huxville this week, removing the old curb and gutter, well, which they've already started. Weather permitting, they will pour the concrete for the new curb and gutter in a couple weeks. Afterwards, they will begin the grading for the new sidewalk. They plan to begin the construction of the new retaining wall by the end of March if weather permits. The wall needs to be completed before construction of the new sidewalk begins. Bee Genie is continuing to install the high-pressure gas line in Section 2, which is from Lower Beckleysville North to Route 482. By the end of April, the gas line work is planned to be north of Route 482. Gas service connections are currently being installed between the fire station and Route 482. The gas line work is planned for completion by the end of July, 2019. Stormwater work is also occurring in Section 2. Town staff met with representatives from Bee Genie's outdoor lighting division. Bee Genie has offered to convert their current lighting on the wood utility poles along Main Street with LED lighting on new Cobra Head fixtures. LED lights emit higher-quality lighting, are more energy-efficient, and produce lower energy costs.
When they're doing that, let's just make sure that we don't have a Main Street that's lit up so bright we can't see the source.
It's gonna produce the same, it'll produce the same wattage, it'll just be clearer. Like, the lights we have now have more of a...
A brighter, like, 6,000 K kinda?
Right, but the light we have now has a...
It's more like a sodium vapor.
Sodium vapor, the yellow.
It's yellow, that's the word I'm looking for. It's more of a yellow light. And this'll be a clearer light. So you'll be able to see better, but it's not gonna be extremely lighter or brighter.
Well, when Main Street's done and all the new lampposts are on, those are staying in?
Yes. Because there are some darker places on Main Street. Florida Rock Properties revised their concept plan for the proposed Hampstead Overlook Development to reflect changes requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the public. FRP and I met with the county staff to discuss these changes. By adding another interest road and changing the layout of the houses, their concept plan will need a formal approval from the county for the stormwater design. With the town's relationship with the county, they offer suggestions for many things, from landscaping and different aspects of the concept plan. But we have given them authority to approve the stormwater design and what goes with the stormwater for our concept plans. So they need to re-engineer their concept plan to include the new entrance road and the layout of the houses that have been rearranged. So once they get the formal approval for that, then they will present it to our commission for approval. And as I said last month, the 3rd Annual Hampstead-Manchester Business and Community Expo will be this Saturday, March 16th, from 9 to 2. And the town will be hosting a table, and I believe Councilwoman Unglesby and Rourke, so they would also be joining me. So thank you. We held a pre-construction meeting on March 1st for the Panther Tower painting project. The contractor plans to begin work by April, weather permitting, and the work should be completed within a month. The temperature needs to remain above 40 degrees during the night for the paint to dry properly. As previously reported, the logo will be repainted on the tower. And it's that time of year, the staff from Town Hall, Public Works, and the Police Department had a meeting to begin the planning process for the FY '20 budget. A Board of Zoning Appeals case hearing has been scheduled for Tuesday, March 26th, at 7:00 PM. This is a request by Daughters Cafe for a conditional use to operate a full-service restaurant in the local business zoning district. The cafe is currently operating as a coffee shop and deli, as allowed by code. And they were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in August of 2018. They're located on the corner of Lower Beckleysville and Route 30. So this year is election year. So the nomination packets for our May 14th town election are now available at the town office. Potential candidates must be at least 25 years old, have lived within the incorporated town limits for at least one year, and be a registered voter. The deadline for nomination is Monday, April 8th, at 4:30 PM. The deadline for voter registration is also April 8th, at 4:30 PM. The first round of advertisements were published in the February 7th and 14th Northern News editions. And the second round will be published in the April 11th and 18th editions. Our Board of Supervisors of Elections was sworn in in the February 12th Town Council meeting. There will be a candidate forum in April. We are coordinating this with the Community Media Center, who will kindly record and broadcast it. Once the date has been scheduled, we will announce it on our website and Facebook page, and will solicit questions from the public for the candidates.
You told them everything but whose positions.
Yep, that's a good point. The mayor position and two council members' positions are up for reelection.
That would be Mr. Rourke or Mr. Unglesby?
Yes. The town is once again awarding two $1,000 scholarships in May. Applicants must live within the incorporated town limits, have acceptance into a college or university, and must have good, holistic standing with a B average or better. Applications are available on our website, at the town office, and at Manchester Valley High School Guidance Office. Deadline for the applications is April 30th. There are also three $1,000 scholarships available through the Carroll County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League, which Councilmember Unglesby will discuss in his reports. And then I also just wanted to bring to everybody's attention the art exhibit we have in town. The town would like to thank the Carroll County Arts Guild for their ongoing exhibits in Town Hall. A new exhibit by artists Christina Brennan Schmidt and Jacqueline LaRaca is now on display and available to view through the end of May. We encourage visitors to stop by anytime, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, to view the artwork. Admission is always free.
Questions? Alright, Marlene, first up, cranking it up?
Yeah, we're cranking, alright. As of today's mail, 11 farmers' market vendors are returning from last summer. Two new vendors have signed up. Four musical groups are lined up throughout the summer, and each month will have different chefs preparing breakfast. Our tagline for this summer will be "Ten Years in Growing", and will be featured on the market's website, Facebook page, print advertising, and signs. For the 10th year celebration, we'll be asking vendors to participate in basket giveaways for customers each week. And August 3rd will be the official 10th year celebration day, as that kicks off the State of Maryland's Farmers Market Week. So we'll have special activities that day. And we are in the process of making plans for our annual vendor lunch and marketing workshop, which will be held the last Saturday in April at J&amp;P Restaurant. And that's it.
And the first day of the market is?
June 1st.
Okay. Marlene?
The Hampstead Training Station Committee, we're working on finalizing the plans for our backroom and getting those approved. Hope to have that work started in early April. Music in the Park, we've lined up a couple bands already, reaching out to some people that played last year and some people that have expressed interest in playing this year. So I hope to have that schedule flushed out by the end of April, start advertising that. Tree Commission, we're planning on a tree planting in April. And I hope to have the committee back together at the end of this month. That's all I have.
Sounds good. Jim?
Alright. Planning and zoning commission of Hampstead met on Wednesday, February 27th, 2019. The first thing on the local agenda was a sign request and an exterior painting request by Wesley Eiler. He's the owner of Melander and Eiler's Motor Pool Garage, which is at 844 South Main Street. The two new signs you're requesting are actually smaller than the old signs. He wants one on the north end and one on the south end of the building. So if you're driving north or south, either way, you're gonna see a sign. Very attractive signs. And then what he was looking as far as a paint scheme, he's looking to paint the building in pale green with brown trim, almost like a sand color. And it looked like it would fit very nice down there. And so, the sign request and painting request were both approved. Next, there was a sign and business request from Patricia Hart, seeking to open a country pet spa at 1023 South Main Street. This address had a dog grooming business in it previously. So that type of usage is allowed in that zoning district, which is local business. The sign she requested is a 3-foot-by-2-and-a-half-foot Corcless sign, which will be home right out there on Main Street on the existing post. And the business and sign requests were both approved. Last item on the local agenda was a request for construction of a detached garage/storage building at 4042 Gill Avenue. John Stewart Alford is the owner of this property. A little bit of history referring to this. Mr. Alford come before the commission in June of 2017, seeking approval for demolition of several outbuildings on the property, along with approval for construction of a new storage building. At that time, Mr. Alford did not have a legal right-of-way for entrance from the rear of the property to get to where he's looking to put this new storage shed, nor did he have the building permits. Since he told us it was not a time-sensitive issue at the June 2017 meeting, the commission approved the demolition of the outbuildings on the property, but did not approve the new construction of the new storage building. So last month, Mr. Alford came back to us, had the building permits, and he had secured the right-of-way from Mr. Shoemaker, his neighbor, for access to the rear of the property from West Avenue. So at this time, the location of the building also met all the required setbacks. So at this time, the request for construction of the storage building was approved. During this county update, Price Wagner informed us that the county's water sewage master plan update had been approved by the county commissioners and was now being submitted to MDE for their perusal and hopefully their approval. And they're looking to get the approval either late spring or early summer. Price also informed us that the Board of County Commissioners completed their review and approved, moving forward with the zoning text changes for the commercial, industrial, and employment campus districts. Now, what they're doing here is they're just changing the text and the wording in the code. They're not rezoning any property at this time. The next step they're gonna do is they're gonna have two outreach meetings in March to introduce the new text changes to the public. The meeting closest to us is scheduled for Tuesday, March 26th, 6:00 PM, at the government building on Center Street in Westminster. If anyone wants to attend, I'll plan on going over and attending it and seeing the new text. If you're a zoning geek, it's kinda cool. So, that's it. Have fun.
Yep.
Joe?
Another report this month.
Alright.
Okay. Water concerns. February 2019 average water usage was 341,000 gallons per day. March 2019 average water usage so far is 336,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for February 2019 was 2.5 inches. And rainfall total so far for March 2019 is 1.6 inches. On the scholarship program, this is the third year that I've done the MML, Maryland Municipal League Scholarship Program. Last year was our largest turnout with students that had applied for it, and we awarded three scholarships to three very deserving students. One was here at Manchester Valley, it lived here in the town of Hampstead. Two others were from the South Carroll High School and lived in Mount Airy. This year, we will do that again. The stipulations are the applicants must meet the above scholarship, which means that they're gonna be accepted into a college or a local university. They also must live in one of the eight incorporated towns or cities in Carroll County. They must complete the scholarship application. And they must prepare a written essay on the specific topic. And number five, they must have a municipal official or representative certify that they actually live in the incorporated limits of a municipality. Last year, we had three, like I say, very good students. Two were exceptional, straight-A students, and the other one was very good honor roll. And that person also had an excellent understanding of the... Last year, we had the Highway User Funds, was a big thing for MML and for our town, where we got money back from the state to take care of our monies for our roads and paving. He understood this better than probably some of the people that were in the state. He researched it so much and wrote an excellent essay on that. So hopefully, I'll get that again this year, the same type of quality.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
G Snyder?
Good evening, everyone. For the month, I'm sorry, for the month of February, we conducted investigations into five crashes. Two were reported at the bypass at the 482 Circle. We issued 121 citations and warnings. We conducted 518 patrol checks of businesses and neighborhoods, and 83 specific checks of our schools. With reference to serious crime, we recorded one theft. The value was under $100 on that one, and two DUIs. We conducted enforcement action that resulted in nine adults being arrested, as included for DUI thefts, CDS violations, outstanding warrants, and a false report to police. With reference to training, Officer Cranshaw graduated from FTO, Field Training Officer School, this month. Officer Harold finished his TASER recertification course. And I completed the comparative compliance training as well. We conducted selective enforcement, traffic-related issues as a result of complaints at the Northwoods Trail and Boxwood intersection, as well as Farmwoods Lane, Upper Ford Lane, and Panther Drive, as resulted in six citations and nine written warnings. And from the community policing standpoint, Stacy actually met and attended the St. John's Brownie Troop meeting on the 4th and talked about safety and responsibility.
Questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
My report, I had the pleasure in the last month as part of the "If I Were a Mayor" essay contest, we go around to the 4th grades in the town. So I was at Spring Garden Elementary School and Hampstead Elementary. It's always a very interesting experience to go talk to the 4th graders. But the essay contest this year was about "Together We Can," so it's a pretty broad topic. And basically, I go there and give them examples of what the mayor can and can't do, what town government can and can't do, give them a little history of Hampstead, and then they ask questions. And usually, those questions, some of them are quite insightful, others are just what you would expect from a 4th grader. But it's been a good experience to do it. They always ask what I like doing the most as a mayor. And I would say this is one of the things that I like doing when I come out and see you guys. But we've had very good success. Every single 4th grader in the state of Maryland, basically, who lives in a municipality, has the opportunity to submit an essay for this. And the state's divided up into 11 districts, of which we are one. And we've had winners from our district a couple of different times. One from Hampstead Elementary and a couple from Spring Garden. So hopefully, we get back on the winning track. And it's a good event. They get a couple of gift certificates, and the winner goes to Annapolis and recognized with all the other district winners. And then they pick one district winner who's the grand champion. So, and they meet the governor or lieutenant governor. So it's a great event for the 4th graders. And them having just finished a course on Maryland sort of reinforces what Hampstead is within Maryland. So that was a good morning spent. We're all going to, I think, most of us are going on Thursday, the Carroll County Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League's having a meeting in New Windsor. I was told that there's upwards of 70 elected officials attending between all eight towns. And we're having the WRCC, the Water Resource Commission, come in. Kevin was giving us a little update about stormwater management and the next steps related to that. So there's a little presentation for that coming. And then we've been following through with the county about putting together an opioid pamphlet, for I guess, lack of a better description, as a resource for those who are interested in what the county and each one of the towns and the different health departments can do to help people out, and sort of a resource manual to direct people where they can get help. So we're gonna get an update on that as well. So that's what's on the agenda for Thursday, when we show up in New Windsor. So, that's it for me. I don't think there's any unfinished business under new business. I guess, somebody wants to talk about an historic roadside marker on Main Street?
That's correct. In case anyone doesn't know what the roadside markers are, it's a program that the state of Maryland has done since 1920s. And basically, they're markers that are on state highways or right-ofways. And they either talk about a historical building or a historical event that took place, or those kind of things. I got the passion to explore something that I found out about some history here in Hampstead. And basically, I'll just go down real quick of what I did and what we got going. No cost to us, but to do an actual SHA marker, it's approximately $1,800. It takes about 18 months, once you pass through the nomination packet and the voting. This marker that we want to put on Main Street at the corner of Gill and Route 30, Main Street, will focus on an event that took place here on May 30th, 1928. This event was President Calvin Coolidge, who stopped here via train at the Hampstead Train Station, on his way to deliver an address at the Gettysburg. I researched the event at the Historical Society on a Saturday with the help of some volunteers that were there. And we spent a couple hours going through Hampstead's packets, about this thick of archives and information, news clippings. Learned a lot of things about Hampstead when I was doing that as well. But I researched this, and there was also an article that was written by the Carroll County Times on 12/10 of 2008. And basically, what that was talking about was various presidents that have stopped here in Carroll County. I spoke with Kathy Beatty, who's the curator of Historical Society, and she'd done some research prior to that. And she told me that she found an article dated on June 1st, 1928, in a newspaper called The Democratic Advocate. It was the day after the event took place here, confirming that this event had taken place in Hampstead the day before. She also told me about a story where there was a flag that was actually given to a son there. So I'll get into that in just a second. But what I did was I prepared the historical marker nomination packet. I also contacted Justin Reedy, Senator, and spoke with him. He was excited about the project, and he helped me get that passed along to the powers that be and the SHA. And I'm happy to announce that they will vote on this marker for us in May 2019 to put that up. If approved, the marker, like I said, will be placed on Maryland 30 at the corner of Gill and Avenue. And I'll forever commemorate this event of President visiting Hampstead, an event that took place in the historical train station. Just real quick, I'll read for you what's gonna be the text that's been proposed to put on the marker. "On May 30th, 1928, President Calvin Coolidge, on his way to Gettysburg, PA, made a brief stop at the Hampstead Train Station. Citizens and the station master were on hand. Once Coolidge's train left, he learned that the station master's son was at home sick and had missed his visit. He then removed his staff car flag and sent it back to Hampstead to give to the sick boy as a souvenir." And Mrs. Beatty took me downstairs and showed me where the flag is now in Historical Society's archives in the basement, preserved there, documenting that event. Thank you.
So we have had a President visit in Hampstead, briefly.
Yeah, I want to thank David for doing the research on this.
Great job, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a very, that's above and beyond. And anything we can do to promote Hampstead historically, I think we should be doing.
Is it, what exactly does the marker look like? Do you have an idea of what?
Well, we have one over, actually, we have one historical marker, I found out, which is the one right by the War Memorial. And it says "Spring Garden" on it. It talks about the beginning of the town of Hampstead. So it looks like that. There's also one in Manchester, similar to that, too.
A segue into the next one. And there goes, Richard's is the one that laid out the...
Right, Richard's is the next one.
Yep. And if I remember correctly, there's a historical marker there, too.
Right, there is one there. It was placed by, actually, the Richards family, though. That's not a state highway one, but yes, there is one there. Yes, correct.
Now, the one you're talking about, the state has specifications, and they're all the same, throughout the state.
Correct. And we will be on a website where people that actually go out and monitor and look at all these and go around the state, showing where it'll be at, so. And even once the road is turned over to the town, the good news is we're gonna get it placed on the SHA right-of-way so that it will be there, so. So I'm looking forward to it.
An R right-of-way at that point?
Correct, correct.
Alright. And then you want to talk about the Willow Street Cemetery beautification project?
Yes. Now, I'm gonna, thanks to Tammy for giving me an actual map. I'll pass down to the council and the mayor. Section number 21, the smaller 21, shows the cemetery. It's located off of Willow Street in Hampstead. I believe, some of the research I did on that, the family that's buried there, the Richards family, was the family and the citizens that laid out Hampstead back in the 1720s, I believe. And they're buried there. So the actual father of Hampstead is there. The site was during the construction of Westwood Park. The site, I believe, was renovated by the builder at that time. And the town took over ownership of approximately one acre that's there. At this time, all we're doing with that, there is a fence there, and some of the markers that were vandalized have been restored. And there's a nice rod on the fence that's been put around the markers. There's also a grove of cherry trees, I believe, and some other trees that are growing there. Basically, it's just grass that we're cutting right now. So we're paying to do that. What I did was, from years back, I remember there was a cemetery in Eloquent City that caught my eye. It's called the Whipps Garden Cemetery. And basically, it's located off of St. John's Lane, historical Eloquent City. And what happened there was they had a similar situation where the grave markers were damaged and destroyed. Actually, a group of citizens on St. John's Lane actually bought the property. It's about the same size of an acre. And over the course of 30 years, they've renovated the property extensively. Now, it's got its own LLC, and it's its own entity. But anyways, I brought this up. If the council wants to see that, that just gives you some ideas. And there's a website if you want to look into that, or what that will look like. So what I did was, we're gonna call this "The Proposal of the Gardens of the Richards Family Burial Grounds." This historical cemetery is owned by the town, and like I said, it's on Willow Street in Hampstead, Maryland. We have already been working with the University of Maryland Corporate Extension Service to help with a team of master gardeners, who will come out, along with volunteers, to help us transform this site into a plot of native grasses, bushes, trees, and also some historical plants that aren't even out anymore, that they've kept the seeds from, and they, you know, will germinate into plants that were common at that time. They're really excited about it, from, like I said, the University of Maryland. It's not something that they've done before. So they're just ecstatic about this. It's gonna be no cross to the town. I've already gotten several landscaping companies that want to donate the mulch, the topsoil. You know, they just want to have their name on the marker that they help renovate this. I've also got a couple seed companies that were interested in this, throughout, you know, websites that have told me they would donate plants and whatever needs to be done. Today, I got an email from the University of Maryland, who is, let me see what she wrote, you'll bear with me one second, telling me that actually, they're very interested, like I say, in the project. She wanted to check in with me today and let me know that she was able to track down the master gardener from the Howard County Director of the Whipps Cemetery. And they're gonna meet and discuss on their own about what they've done at Whipps over the past 30 years and how this could work for us. They've also gotten together already some master gardeners who would like to come out and do this here. They said it might be something that we'd want to set up as a tier thing, starting out small, but getting it going. And tomorrow night, they're already gonna have at the Corporate Extension Service in College Park, they're having a gardening program there. And they're gonna recruit some master gardeners that would want to come out here and help us lay this out and get this going. She's also included, again, they would, the University of Maryland would like to donate some of the flowering bulbs as well. So basically, what I'd like to do is just get the council permission, mayor's permission, to go ahead and use that property for that. Also spoke to Kevin, something down the road we might think about doing is actually getting a water hookup out there. One of our water mains goes right by it, so that we could tap into that, hopefully, and use water to keep the plants watered and, you know, take care of them at that point. But this is something that I've had a passion with. It's an area that I think would look really nice, and I think it'd be something that people would want to stop by and see, so.
More power to you. I agree. I remember when we approved it, so.
Oh, okay, perfect, perfect.
So, we need a vote from the council to move forward with this, move in? Let's go.
Alright.
Great job, David.
I'll give you an update on it as needed.
Alright.
Thank you.
Other new business? And then, under ordinances and resolutions, we have only one, which is an ordinance regarding small cell site legislation. The MML's legislative priority this year. Interesting case that we have competing bills in both the House of Delegates and in the Senate. So one's basically a community coalition bill, and then the other is a, which is supported by MML, MACO, and several municipalities. And the other one is basically a wireless technology bill, back bill. So far, MML has been working...
So far, MML has been working on this bill to keep the community coalition bill in moving forward, which basically gives us the local authority to presiding in aesthetic use, which is what we're going to introduce tonight. The other bill basically says, "Local governments have no say in this, and we can put them wherever we want," and circumvents the local process entirely. So much work needs to be done on both sides. The positive development was last Friday, the House Economic Matters Committee voted unanimously to present this to summer study, which then all the competing parties get together and hash it out. But the Senate bills are both still alive, and they're working on getting the same result for their... But in the meantime, we're introducing a local ordinance, giving us local authority to have aesthetic control over the small cell technology. And because this is the next step and where it's going, and they can appear quite intrusive, and we want to have certain requirements as to where they can be located throughout town. We can't say they can't be, but we can control where they can be. So that's the reason for the introduction of Ordinance 530. I'll take a motion.
Motion to introduce.
All right. So Joe will be the introduce, and William will be the second. Any further discussion on it? I know there's been several tweaks to it. We're basically mirroring most of what Tony Town has done and several other towns have done. And we'll work through the process, and then we'll be in a public hearing, and we'll go through the approval next month. But I need a further discussion. All is in favor? Anyone opposed? Well, that's it for that. Public comments? One, twice? Ms. Ortell?
How are you?
Good.
Good. Holly Ortell, 4474 Woodsman Drive, Hampstead. I have two questions. I had a meeting with the good folks up at Hampstead Fire Company, asked me to come up and speak to them, and a couple of them came up and they asked me that they believe the town has a fund for fire department funding. Even though most of the money, all the money comes from either donations or Carroll County, there's been some concerns that were brought to me that the town has money set aside to help with their EMS funding, their fire, their recruiting and retention program.
That's such a question?
Yes.
Yes. So every budget we have, we're up to $40,000. We... And that's what we set aside for the volunteer fire company, and I go present that check April/May timeframe.
Okay. When I asked you about this, I believe it was back in December here, you said the monies come from Carroll County government.
The bulk of the monies for the fire departments come from Carroll County. Each town has its own way of contributing to the fire departments in their respective counties.
All right. Okay. Thank you. And one other thing. I came and I spoke with Tammy. I spoke with Dave. I forgot his name with the state. He sits in the trailer out back. Main Street, it's a mess. I mean, you all know. You all drive it. Somebody, and it was another person that hit the pothole besides the one that came and complained to you, blew a tire out, bent a rim up there near the post office, and since then, they've gotten it fixed. But when you're talking that it's still a state road, but when the town went ahead with doing all the underground water construction, the state was supposed to follow right away and then do the patch jobs, if I'm not mistaken, correct? And the patch jobs were only supposed to last for, what, a year? A year, year and a half?
We put in a patch that could last a year to two years, and it was a delay. State Highway came behind us a year later.
So we're looking at three years that these patches have been, and we're going to probably look at another year before they get fixed. I mean, it's worse than a washboard driving down... You know, I've talked to... State Highway sends me over to the town and says, "Nope, it's not our problem. It's the town's problem." Talked to Tammy, you know, "It's the state's problem." Talked to CJ Miller, you know, "Why is it like a washboard? When you put down a patch, you should be using a roller." And I, you know, "Is there anything that the town can do for the people that are complaining?" I mean, there is a lot of people.
It's a... We all knew it was going to be a long process, and this year is very important for the continued progress of the Main Street Revitalization Project. And hopefully, by weather good, and we don't have the monsoons we did last year, we can get up to 482, and it'll put down the... What do they call that? The temporary paving?
Neverly.
Yeah. The base paving for that section. But they'll be working through it, and Tammy's looking into it, but they'll be working more from Lower Becklessville all the way up to 482 this summer, and they would finish that in sections as they go. I agree, I ride on it twice a day, every day. You just got to take your time and go slow, is what it is.
Well, I know.
And as far as complaints go, there is a process.
There is a process. And the process is, you go to the State Highway website and enter your complaint. And then, it's then directed to the construction manager who we discuss it... He discusses it with the town, CJ Miller. But the process is, I didn't necessarily send you back to the state, but the process is, is you go to the State Highway website, and that's where people enter their complaints.
Right. And I didn't go back to them after I left you. You know, it's just too much back and forth, back and forth, because nobody wants to take the responsibility.
The state is taking responsibility. And I've been the one big pothole. Unfortunately, potholes are a way of life.
Yep.
I hit many of them on an expressway going into Baltimore every morning. But so...
There was a severe subsurface failure that occurred there, and they were notified early, early in the morning, and unfortunately, a few people before they got... CJ Miller got on the scene, got the area coned off, did hit that pothole, including some of the people that worked for my department. And we rushed up there, but by that time, CJ Miller was already on the scene.
Right.
So it was a large subsurface failure that caused that.
Okay. And that's all.
People were on it, and they're monitoring it, and I mean, by the time it was first reported, I think within an hour, CJ Miller was there.
Right.
So...
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We stay vigilant. Mr. Harold, you've got something.
Well, all these people come in here with these negative comments. It insults me when I see in the paper. People running for political office should know what they're talking about. The mayor and council and probably the managers has got blamed, gotten blamed for this Main Street episode. Anytime you remodel, update, change, you're going to have inconveniences. Yes, I drive that several times a day, and it's like a washboard. I sit there and wait for a flagman, but that's part of the game. Also, you should not complain about things you don't know about. You guys got blamed in the paper about North Carroll's High School closing. That's as dumb as dumb can be. And I suggest these people running for office, do some studying like Mr. Ungliffly has done, and you saw tonight what a report these guys gave, Mr. Rourke and others. You're doing a beautiful job. There's nobody else going to come in here, green, don't know what to talk about, never show up at the meetings. They never show up at the meetings until they run to office, and it's insulting. You guys done a great job. I hope you return to office.
Appreciate that, Doug. Thank you. Everybody has the right to run. At one point, I was the green guy, right? But we'll learn and move on. But thank you very much. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Janet Jacober, Century Street. I heard a comment about the scholarship fund that you give out, and I heard that you have to be accepted into a college. What about a trade school?
For the MML scholarship or for the one the town's giving?
Either or. I think a trade school is just as valuable.
I think both of them, at this point, are not trade school qualified. You have... It's either community college or a four-year college. But this is a good point. Why don't you bring that up?
I think it is a good idea. There are a lot of children out there that may not be college-bound, but trade schools are expensive, and I think that that really needs to be considered. And the other thing about the road, is there going to be signs put up maybe at the circles, giving us times of when the flag people are going to be there? I very rarely ever hit 30. I ride down into Hunt Valley, I hit Black Rock Falls Road. But I have to say, it was like 5:30, quarter of 6:00, didn't even think about it, and I hit two different flagmen just to go come in and head to Walmart right after work. So is there any way we could get signs up maybe at the circle just saying that, you know, the roads are going to be possibly closed or, you know, flagmen between this time and this time?
Well, we have signs. We have the signs at the north end of Main Street and the south end of Main Street.
Right. It's not on Black Rock.
Yeah.
And there's a sign on 482, too.
Okay. And there's a sign on 482. It's not on Black Rock?
Yeah, it's not on Black Rock. And that's the roads I take all the time.
Okay. Sorry about that. We tried to hit them all. Maybe we'll put one there. But it's basically, they can work from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Typically, they're setting up at around 7:15 a.m., and then they're done 4:30, 5 o'clock. But it depends on what they back one that day and how well it went. They can go to 7:00 p.m., and I'd say maybe once, twice a week, that might happen. Sometimes not at all. But it all depends what they're trying to do and the scope of work that day and how many issues they ran into as they went along. But that's their hours of work, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Will they be working weekends? Over...
No. Not... That's not part of the deal right now.[1697.13]